Good evening and welcome to our Smyrna Town Council meeting. Before we move into our meeting agenda tonight, we do have someone under Citizens Comments. We have Tanya Stevens. Are you here? Oh, good. If you will come forward and state your name and address for the record, and then you have three minutes to speak. And Ms. Diane will keep that.
Alrighty. My name is Tanya Stevens, and my address is 452 Williamsport Drive in Smyrna. In the interest of time, I'll read from something I've already prepared, and I appreciate y'alls time today. "I'd like to voice my concern about the rezoning of the property adjacent to my house from R1, which is low-density residential, to R3, medium-density residential. Please understand that it is not my intention to totally stop the development of this land. It is my intention to urge you as the leaders in our community to carefully consider all of the possible ramifications of this rezoning before deciding on this issue. Since the R3 designation allows for lot sizes of 10,000 square feet and has no required minimum home sizes, we have no assurance that what is built will remain consistent with the existing homes in the neighborhood. This rezoning would allow for the construction of up to 120 houses, with my street becoming a main thoroughfare for entering and exiting this new development. Not only will this increase in traffic affect my street, but it will also add to the existing traffic flow problems on Rock Springs Road and Sam Ridley Parkway. Also adding to our recent traffic problems will be the residence of the homes slated to be built in the Stewart's Creek area and the high-density units slated to be built at the corner of Rock Springs Road and Stonecrest Parkway. Our infrastructure is already taxed and cannot handle such quick growth. I feel that new residential construction may need to be limited until our infrastructure has been upgraded to accommodate the increase in traffic. I have many concerns about this plan, including traffic, wildlife, green space, sidewalk construction, student-to-teacher ratios at our local schools, property value, possible drainage issues, inadequate infrastructure, and overall the overdevelopment of our community. Since my time to address the council is short, some neighbors and I have outlined our concerns in a document that I will leave with each of you to study. On a more personal note, when my husband and I moved here in 2005, we did so to escape the overdevelopment in Laverne. We have started our family here in Smyrna. We now have ten-year-old twins that have enjoyed six years at David Urie Elementary and will attend Rocky Fork Middle School next year. We have been happy citizens of this awesome town for nearly 13 years, but I fear that the overdevelopment of Smyrna could cause us to once again feel the need to escape overdevelopment by moving further out. We love this town and had planned to stay here for many years. In closing, I believe it is the council's responsibility to make zoning decisions that will preserve the safety and integrity of our town." Sorry, I'm trying to fit a lot in three minutes. "As stated in the Town of Smyrna Municipal and Zoning Code Section 1.040, the purpose of this ordinance is to promote the public health, safety, morals, convenience, order, prosperity, and general welfare by preventing the overcrowding of land, conserving the value of land and buildings, minimizing traffic..." Can I finish this? One second.
One sentence, yes.
"Preventing undue concentration of population."
Great.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. And if you just want to leave those with Ms. Diane, she will make sure to get those to us. And we appreciate you coming to speak, and we will address some of the issues and questions that you've talked about when it's actually presented before this board, because it's not been presented before us yet.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay? Thank you. Okay. I will call this meeting to order, and tonight, our prayer is going to be led by Councilmember Steve Sullivan, and our pledge is going to be done by Rex Gaither. If you all will stand with us for our pledge and our prayer.
Let's bow your heads. Lord, we ask that you be with us tonight, Lord, as we come together and meet and discuss the town business. Lord, we ask that you continue to bless our town, bless our citizens, and bless the employees and staff that helped make this community what it is today. We ask that you be with each decision that's made, and that the decisions would be made in light of the overall knowledge that you impart on us. We ask that you be with the council and the council members as they deliberate. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Rex, Steve, Ms. Diane. If you'll do roll call, please.
Councilwoman Coe.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilwoman Morell.
Here.
Councilwoman Norr.
Here.
Councilwoman Peebles.
Here.
Councilwoman Sullivan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Atkins.
Here.
Mayor Reed.
Here.
Okay, we'll move on to Item 3, which is approval or corrections of the minutes of the February 13th, 2018, and February 22nd, 2018 minutes. Are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
For a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes pass. Item 4 is correspondence and communication. Anything tonight, Mr. Gill?
The only thing I'd like to say, I think it's certainly noticeable that we've been working on kind of remodeling the council chambers, put a committee together, Mayor served on it, and I think it's looking great. Needed to be done, hadn't done anything on it in, I don't know, 30-plus years. But the real purpose here is to thank Pete Johnson and Ed Comer and their team. They've done all the... Our employees have done all the work on this. We went back and made them change two or three things, bless their hearts, and I'm sure they would like to have told us, "Get out of here and leave us alone," but they didn't do that. And anyway, it's looking good. We're going to carpet the place, and I think it's something that everybody can be proud of. In addition, HG and I are serving on a solid waste committee. In case you're not aware, there's an issue with respect to our landfill reaching capacity, perhaps closing in eight to 10 years. They're trying to find an alternative to that, but I encourage people to pursue to that committee's recommendation, to start recycling, be a little more thrifty when it comes to trash. And I'll be quiet after this, but I've gotten multiple calls here in the last few weeks about people throwing trash on the side of the roads. Please stop that if you're perpetuating that. Doesn't do our community any good, and it's not what we need.
Agreed. In addition to giving a little facelift to the council chambers, we'll also be doing that out in the lobby as well. So if you're somebody that comes into the lobby to pay your bills or for any reason, just bear with us when we get... We move to that process. It'll be... It shouldn't take very long, but I promise you it'll look significantly better once it's complete. So, any awards or recognitions tonight?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Then we'll move on to the consent agenda. And the consent agenda are items that are determined by the town manager to be routine matters and that don't need discussion, but if there's an item that a council member would like to pull off and vote on individually, we can do that. I always like to read the items on the consent agenda, just so the people in the audience, as well as those at home watching, will know what we're voting on. And there's quite a few items tonight, so if you'll bear with me while I read these. Item A is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an extension agreement with Pyro Shows relative to the 2018 Town of Smyrna Firework Show. Item B is approval and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with ESP Services relative to the telecommunications audit and analysis. Item C is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a maintenance agreement with better business equipment relative to the park's department copier. Item D is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an SE SAC Society of European Stage Authors and Composers Music Performance License for municipalities. Item E is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a maintenance agreement with Solitude Lake Management relative to the pond at J.J. McWilliams Old Rock School Park. Item F is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Sessions Paving relative to the construction of the Jefferson Springs Greenway Extension. Item G is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal contract with Barton Lawn Care relative to the mowing for park properties. Item H is approval of the terms and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Barton Lawn Care relative to the mowing of non-park properties. Item I is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with SNW Contracting Company relative to the intersection improvements at Nissan Drive and Sergeant Asbury-Hawn Way, Gate 1. Item J is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Gresham Smith and Partners relative to supplemental services at the Sam Ridley Widening Project for the acoustic bats survey. Item K is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Neil Schaefer relative to the CEI Construction Engineering Inspection Services for the Smyrna Signal Systems, the ITS Phase 1 and 2 project. Now that I'm done with all those, anybody have one they want to pull off and talk about individually? Seeing none, then do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
For a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda passes. We'll now move on to old business, and in old business tonight, we have five public hearings. Our first item of business is consideration of a resolution relative to a plan of services for property located on Tax Map 32, part of parcel 19.01. Kevin?
This is the plan of services for the annexation and zoning request. It's the next item on your agenda. This is a piece of property kind of south of Rock Springs Road, between Rock Springs Road and Lee Road. The plan of services, it puts in place or puts in writing all the services that the town would be providing upon the effective date of annexation, and this is an area where we would be providing all services to this property. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this plan of service.
Questions for Kevin on this? We've talked about this in two other meetings. Anything new? Then we will go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this Seeing no one, we'll close this public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
A move we approve.
Thank you.
Well, when did he get here?
Sorry, they weren't giving tickets out in the HOV land. I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item B is also a public hearing, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation of property located on Tax Map 32, part of parcel 19.01, containing approximately 16.53 acres. It's requested by JM Burns LLC. The zoning would be R3. The property is located south of Rock Springs Road and adjacent to parcels previously annexed and zoned PRD, Woodmont and Buckingham Hills, as well as Woodcrest Development. This is a second reading. Kevin?
Yeah, this is the annexation and zoning request for the property we just looked at or plan of services you just looked at. The land use plan would support low-density, single-family residential development in this area. Surrounding zoning is a mix of the PRD and R3 in town, as well as RM in Rutherford County. Again, the town would be providing all services to this area. We did... Or the Planning Commission did not include a small area of a 10-feet-wide strip adjacent to the property to the west, so that the remaining portion of the parcel between what has been requested and Rock Springs Road would not be surrounded by town limits. It is anticipated that all this property would be annexed at some point, but it has not been requested at this time, so we had to leave that area out. So, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of this annexation, as well as the zoning of R3.
Questions for Kevin on this?
This is the one where we've confirmed that planning is going to make sure that another route be looked into upon any additional phases, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you for bringing that up, because I think we were more than clear on that, that for any future development here, we would have to have another way of ingress and egress into this area.
So hopefully, they have heard that.
I think they've heard it.
Yeah, they have heard it.
Good. Any other questions for Kevin before we move to the public hearing? Okay. Then we will go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
A move we approve.
For a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item C is our housekeeping item that we're required to do, which is a consideration of a resolution in Memorandum of Ordinance 18-05 relative to the annexation and R3 zoning of property located on Tax Map 32, part of parcel 19.01. Anything to add, Kevin?
No.
Okay. Then do I have a motion?
Sullivan.
For a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item D is also a public hearing. It's a consideration of a resolution relative to a plan of services for property located on Tax Map 35, part of parcel 81.04. Kevin?
Yeah, this is, Mayor, Council. This is the plan of services, again, for the annexation and zoning request. It's the next item on your agenda. This is a plan of services for approximately 1.75 acres. It's a portion of a parcel. Again, this puts in writing the services the town would be providing upon the effective date of annexation. We will be providing all services here except for water, as this does lie within consolidated utility districts water service area. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this plan of service.
Questions for Kevin on this item?
Kevin, and again, the usage here really isn't changing.
That's correct.
It's just maybe...
It's going to be redeveloped.
Redeveloped, improved, and continuing on the same things that are currently happening there.
Correct.
And annexing and getting a little bit of tax revenue.
Thank you, Lori.
You're welcome.
Other questions or comments for Kevin? Okay. Seeing no others, then we will go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
A move we approve.
For a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item E is the public hearing that is the consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation of the property we just discussed, which is located on Tax Map 35, part of parcel 81.04, containing approximately 1.75 acres. It's requested by the Patel's. The zoning would be C2. The property is located at 8216 Florence Road, and it is a second reading. Kevin?
Yeah, this is the annexation and C2 zoning request, 8216 Florence Road. As Councilwoman Morell just said, it is already developed with a commercial building. Land use plan would support a medium-density, single-family residential in this area, which is what the majority of this area is developed as, but this is an existing commercial piece of property. Surrounding zoning is R3 in town and RM in Rutherford County. Again, this area does lie within CUD's service boundary for water, but the town would be providing all of the services. The portion of this property that is requested is currently zoned CS or Commercial Services in Rutherford County, which is a very similar zoning to RC2. And so this... We wouldn't be changing its zoning in really in any way, other than it would be under our zoning ordinance versus the county zoning ordinance. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this unanimously.
Okay. Questions or comments for Kevin on this item? Seeing none, then we will go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
A move we approve.
For a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Our housekeeping item is Item F, which is consideration of a resolution in Memorandum of Ordinance 18-06 relative to the annexation and C2 zoning of property located on Tax Map 35, part of parcel 81.04. Anything to add, Kevin?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Then do I have a motion by the council?
So moved.
For a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Our last public hearing tonight is a consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 49, parcel 30.02, containing approximately 3.35 acres. It's requested by Rocky Top Properties LLC to go from R3 to I3. The property is located at 215 Mill Lane, and it is a second reading. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor, Council. This is a piece of property at 215 Mill Lane. It's about 850 feet south of the intersection of Mill Lane and Wade-Harrid Road. Land use plan for the area would support heavy industrial development. Surrounding zoning is R3 and I3 in town and RM in Rutherford County. Sewer is not currently located at this site. It would have to come south from Wade-Harrid Road on easements from adjoining property owners who are within the right-of-way of Mill Lane, and Mill Lane is not currently within the town limits. The developer is aware of that. That was really kind of more for their information. This is a piece of property that the Planning Commission had reviewed a few months ago for R6 request, and they did recommend against that, and it was withdrawn before the council ever acted on it. So the developer has requested to go back to what had been zoned originally, which was the heavy industrial zone of I3. The Planning Commission did recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on this? I think we've discussed this quite a bit, so...
I think the only thing, and if I'm reading it right, so the road itself is not in C limits, right?
That's correct.
So any improvements to the road to handle whatever the development would be would have to be county or paid for by the developer, right?
And we've talked with the county engineering department about some of that, and they're aware of this request, and so, I mean, they had actually recommended to the developer to request the road to be annexed. They didn't do that, so we could... I mean, it's a county right-of-way.
Of course they did.
Yeah. And in a way, it wouldn't be such a bad idea that we could control it that way, too, as far as any improvements and that sort of thing. At this time, and it may be at some point we do initiate that annexation.
But when it comes before planning as a site plan, the Planning Commission could make the road, the development of the road, you know, be a road study done.
Absolutely.
So, even though it is a county road.
Yeah, absolutely, and we would certainly do that.
Other questions or comments for Kevin? Okay, this is our last public hearing, so at this point, we will go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, we will close this public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
A move we approve.
For a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll now move on to our new business, and our new business, first off, is our Planning Commission report. We have three items tonight. Our first item is a consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation of property located on Tax Map 56, parcel 50.00, containing approximately 16.71 acres. It's requested by RHB LLC. The zoning would be R3. The recommendation also includes the annexation of approximately 1,500 linear feet of existing right-of-way of Baker Road. The property is located east of Baker Road, south of Interstate 24, and it is a first reading. Kevin?
Yeah, this is a request for annexation and R3 zoning. It's east of... The property is east of Baker Road and just south of I-24. Actually, part of the property actually does border the I-24 right-of-way. Land use plan will support a medium-density, single-family residential development in this area. The surrounding zoning is the Meadows PRD, which is across Baker Road from the property in town. That's the only parcel that's adjacent to it in town. The rest of the property is in Rutherford County and zoned RM. The town would be providing all services except for water here. The recommendation did include the annexation of approximately 1,500 linear feet of the existing right-of-way of Baker Road from the I-24 right-of-way south to the southernmost boundary of the parcel that was requested for annexation. This does allow for the property to be contiguous to the town limits. Otherwise, it would be non-contiguous, which we can do now, but it's a... There's a lot of paperwork that the county and city have to agree to as far as inter-local agreements and that sort of thing, and it doesn't... For something like this, it doesn't make sense to go through that process. We can just annex the right-of-way and take care of the issue. So it also allows for the town, again, to control any necessary improvements that we might want to see there return lanes and that sort of thing, as this property develops. The Planning Commission did review this request and did recommend approval unanimously.
Questions for Kevin on this?
Not a question, but a comment. So the Meadows, they actually are doing a traffic study, aren't they? Wasn't that one of their requirements?
They did, and they did do that, yes. And there are some road improvements to primarily to one-mile lane that were required as a part of that study.
You said we provide everything but water. Where is sewer coming from?
Sewer would be coming through the Meadows.
Okay.
It would be connecting through there.
So, okay.
Yeah.
Kevin, for the council, when we're looking at 16.7 acres in an R3, what would be a, you know, potential yield in the number of homes there?
Well, you typically... It's usually somewhere between 2 and 1/2 to 3 units per acre on an R3.
Is that factoring in roads and...
Yeah, you'd have to discount some of the acres just for roadways, detention ponds, those type of things, other sinkholes or whatever the property may have that you have to design around. So, roughly 50. I think the developer was actually looking at a little bit lower than 50.
Yeah, well, didn't we hear 44?
44 or 42. 45, I think, was the number they were thinking.
Yeah. And, you know, it was important for us to go ahead and, from a planning perspective, and take in Baker Road, because, you know, even Lori was talking about the other traffic study that's being done there, and this allows us to take it, you know, I'm not sure that I'd say a step further, but certainly, we would have much more control over what was done there to accommodate this and, you know, be of benefit both to this parcel and, I would think, in the Meadows as well.
Are you requiring them to have a traffic study as well?
Well, we haven't gotten to that point yet, but yes, I would anticipate that.
Okay. Other questions?
Did they present you with a plan, an actual...
No, this was just a rezoning request, so, believe me, when we get the plan, we're going to go over it.
No, they did not submit us any type of sub, you know, concept plan or anything like that.
Mark, anything from you?
No, I totally concur with what's been discussed already. We talked about this at length in planning the other night, and even asked some questions beyond that that we thought we needed to know about, as far as what's the future use of that whole area there, and so that was addressed as well.
So what do they... What was the answer to that question?
Well, we just brought up the topic that we know that we're looking for the Rocky Fork interchange, and that's our goal. That's where we want to go. But as a second thought, more than anything, could Baker Road ever come into play? Could that be an interchange access that could come into play in the future? We doubt it, but we asked the questions anyway, because that's starting to really fill in right there.
Right.
And it would create a lot of problems if you tried to put an interchange in at this point, so...
Well, in addressing that issue, I know there were some things that came out in the paper that made it seem as if our focus is shifting from the Rocky Fork Road interchange to a Baker Road interchange, and in no way is that the case. The Baker Road is on our major thoroughfare plan, and... But our focus is still 100% Rocky Fork Road. I know that there were some individuals that were asking some questions about that, and I just want to make sure the public understands where our focus is. Other questions or comments on this item?
RHB, is that someone who's worked with us before?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so they pretty much understand what we are looking for?
Sure.
Okay. And this is just the annexation?
Correct.
Yeah.
For annexation and zoning, right.
Any other questions? Then, do I have a motion?
Sell move.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Our next item is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on tax map 28, parcel 103.01, containing approximately 43.3 acres. It's requested by Sean Collins to go from R1 to R3. The property is located at the end of Williamsport Drive, and this is a first reading. Kevin?
Yeah, this is a rezoning request. Property is in the city already. All the others we've had have seemed like have been annexations tonight. This is a rezoning. It's, property is located at the end of Williamsport Drive. It actually has four roads stubbed into it, Williamsport Drive on two ends, and then Montefay Drive and High Ridge Drive. Land use plan would support a medium-density residential development here, and surrounding zoning for this parcel is R3. The planning commission did review this and recommend approval unanimously.
So, I will tell you, I've gotten a handful of emails about this rezoning, and I think there's been some inaccurate information that has been put out there. Probably the, the biggest thing that I've seen is that it's gonna be apartments, town homes, or multifamily duplexes, that sort of thing, and so, Kevin, can you address that?
Yeah, the R3 zone would not allow any of that. It is R1, the current zoning is a single-family zoning, 15,000 square feet lots. R3 is in a single-family zoning with 10,000 square feet lots, so it does decrease the lot size, but...
It's the minimum square foot lot.
That's the minimum square foot lot, yeah.
They could still certainly be larger.
Oh, absolutely.
One of the things, and I know that when Ms. Stevens was up speaking a while ago, I thought I heard her say that she is living in an R1 zone on Williamsport. Okay, 'cause that's all R3 around you as well. Okay. I just want to make sure you got clarification on that, if that was a question.
Yeah, I obviously received probably the same emails you did, maybe a few more. There definitely was some misinformation. There's a couple of things that were troubling in some of the emails I saw was the, obviously the misunderstanding about the zoning. Some, someone was propagating misinformation that kind of got a lot of folks spun up. But to be fair, when, when we're looking at zoning, first of all, every property owner has the right to develop their property. I understand that we don't always want to see it developed. I have empty space behind my house that I very much enjoy. However, it's not my property. If the developer, people behind it decide to develop it, that may happen, and I knew that when I bought that piece of property. In this case, when the owner comes to us and says, "I want to rezone," what we have to consider is, does the zoning make sense for the area? If he was asking for commercial or industrial in this area, that doesn't make sense.
Or R6.
Or R6.
Yeah.
But this property is completely surrounded by R3. There is no other zoning adjacent to this property. So, if anything, the R1 is the outlier. Obviously, I like R1, so R1 would be okay if that's what he wanted to leave it, but R3 is consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. So, from a, strictly from a zoning perspective, regardless of the plan, regardless of what he's planning at this point, which we don't know, our question is, does this zoning meet the requirements and is it in the right area? And the answer is yes. So, from strictly a zoning perspective, R3 makes sense. It's the right answer for this piece of property. Now, how he develops it, what he does with it, there is a lot of land in this area that is probably undevelopable. There's some very steep hills, so I think there's gonna be quite a bit of green space because you can't put a house on the side of a cliff in some places, but when we see that plan, we'll be able to address things like green space, or traffic, how are they gonna get in and out of the subdivision, whether or not we require a traffic study at Old Nashville Highway or at Rock Springs Road to add additional turn lanes or even a red light or whatever, and if there's requirements that come out of that, the developer will have to make those adjustments. So, I want y'all to understand that this is strictly zoning. We don't have a plan yet. We don't know what he's planning or what they will do, or even when it's coming. It may be another year or two before he actually does anything, but the owner just simply wants the right to be able to develop his land in a zone that meets the rest of the neighborhood, and that's what he's asking for, and I don't really see a way not to give him that.
I want to address just some of the questions I've gotten, and then Kevin, I'm gonna get you to talk a little bit about the process, because I know for some of you, this is all new to you as to how the process goes, but I want you to understand what the process is for this developer to get their property to where it is buildable. So, I'm gonna have Kevin address that, but some of the things that I want us, while you're kind of talking about the process, when this would come along in the process.
Okay.
How many homes will be planned per acre? Will there be vinyl siding homes or brick homes? How can you reserve a little bit of semblance of what we have today? And stormwater runoff? One question that's on here that I was a little unsure about was, it says the developer's already begun work on the property.
Yeah, there's been, not been any permits granted. I'm not aware of anything. It should be, the only thing that may be going on there, sometimes there are a few trees getting knocked down when they're doing some geotech testing.
Yeah.
You know, things like that nature, that could be going on. But there's not been any kind of permits grading or any kind or anything like that, blasting or anything that should be going on, so...
So, those are kind of, and then also in regards to traffic, were the other things that were discussed, were there other questions that is, he's kind of talking about some of the process and all?
So, one thing, I don't know if Sean Collins is here and if he is actually just developing or if he will be building as well. And two, if he is planning to be the builder, what other subdivisions has he done that, you know, people could look at and kind of see, see his work?
Okay. I don't believe he's here, 'cause by understanding, he's out of town. I have corresponded with him, the email the last week or so, but I believe he is out of town, so I doubt he's here. And I do not know if he's just looking at developing or building. I do know he is involved with a subdivision that you all had looked at from a zoning standpoint on Rocky Fork Road called Blakeney, which is just, hasn't even started work yet. It, we're still reviewing that through the planning commission. They don't have any kind of approval for anything beyond the zoning at this point. That was a PUD.
Kevin, he is the developer that, from first reading to second reading on Blakeney, on the PRD out there, he came back and made some changes after we had made some suggestions to him already, correct?
That is correct.
My impression of him at this point is that, you know, he's, he's willing to work with the, the town on different...
Well, and I also talked to Kevin today to see if he could talk to Mr. Collins, to see if he might be willing to meet with some of the neighborhood out there to just kind of let them know what his plans are. I think a lot of times, just communication makes a huge difference, that he may tell you what his plans are, or exactly what you guys are looking for and that you're happy with, so I think Kevin was gonna try to talk to him to see if he might be willing. I know you said he was out of town.
I did reach out to him via email today, and he responded back, and he was very happy to try to get a meeting organized and to do that.
I think that'd be great.
And, you know, one of the things that, questions that I've tried to answer to some of the people I've spoken with or responded to was the values. You know, you have to look at your values in the neighborhood, and you don't want to be affected. You don't want to have your property affected value-wise by what's coming in. And I find in our market, it's really, really difficult, especially on a hilltop, to do any kind of developing and building in there where your lots would be cheap enough to sell to a builder to where there wasn't a lot of cost involved. So, that's gonna create probably some price increases in there, in my opinion, that will probably overshadow what you're currently living in now. That's just a hypothesis, but I can tell you, that's what I'm seeing happen just about everywhere. The cost of these things are going up and up and up. So, in order for a builder to kind of make a profit in a difficult, in difficult terrain like this, they have to do some upgrades. They have to charge for upgrades. They have to do a lot of extra material, and bricks and granites and things like that, that they can build profit into, because there's no profit really in the foundation of the home. They're having to sink a lot of money into these foundations to get them leveled, to get them off these hill sides and so forth. So, that may help you, those of you that have some concern about value. I don't think you're gonna have to be too concerned about that, but we will certainly take a look when he comes in with a site plan to the planning commission. We'll certainly take a look at this, and if there are questions about value, they will come up, and we will do our utmost best to make sure that your values are protected. An R3 zone all around you makes all the sense in the world. If it's going to develop, it's probably what you want to see if you're a neighbor in there, because otherwise, a higher density development or anything else that could be requested in there, we would've had to face that as well and answer those questions and process all that, too. Had a great conversation with a nice lady today, and I won't mention her name, I don't know if she's in the audience or not today, but we spoke at good length about, you know, traffic and wildlife and things of that nature, and these all matter to us, too. But quite honestly, those of you that have lived in the neighborhood, maybe for a year or two or five or whatever it was, you probably picked that neighborhood because you like the ambiance of it, you like the neighborhood feel to it. Unfortunately, we can't lock the keys to the city. There's other people that want to live here, and there's people that, when your home was built, didn't want your home to be built, so we're kind of in that same predicament here. We're trying to do as best we can with the zoning that's being requested here. It's the best fit for you guys, and I hope you understand that, I hope you see that. Other than that, that's about all I can add to it.
Yeah, let me, let me kind of go back over something we, we talked about, and I'm not sure we've answered yet for everyone. Runoff is always a big question, and the way our ordinances are set up, a property can no longer, cannot discharge any more water than it currently does, and oftentimes, we find that it actually improves because when the engineering's done and, and Tom and his staff reviews it, we make sure that, you know, there's not more going out, and oftentimes, we'll find that, you know, we'll actually retain more and create less. The other thing I want to add is, that's my neighborhood, too. I live at 366 St. Francis, and usually on Saturdays, I'm on wife-order yard duty, so you'll find me out in the front yard. I'm, I'm not gonna guarantee you that my clothes are gonna match or anything like that, but you can stop in and, and talk to me and catch me there, but this is my neighborhood, too. And not only this neighborhood, but every neighborhood that I look at from a planning perspective and from a council perspective, I want to be proud of. I'm not interested in just dropping homes in anywhere. I want to make sure they're dropping in the right homes that fit the neighborhood, and that's gonna be our goal here. Mark mentioned it, you know, you can't come into a neighborhood like this and throw up a 1,200-square-foot vinyl home and accept, accept it or expect it to be sold. It's just not gonna happen. It's not, number one, I'm not gonna approve it, but even if you could approve it, it's not gonna sell, and number one, the, number two, actually, the developer's not gonna make any money on it because the cost to develop that is prohibited from throwing up something that's just something that you, you drop in versus a well-built, well-designed, well-customed home. So, we're, we're seeing in the communities large, when we're seeing the new neighborhoods come in, they're not downgrading the quality and the materials or anything, they're upgrading. And I think the last thing that we looked at that was even starter homes, Mark, what, 270, 290?
There's, you find me a starter home under 250, 2 and 1/4, and there's a line waiting for them.
Yeah, but I, I do hear your concerns. Again, probably on one of those Saturdays, I was out cutting the front yard, and all of a sudden, there was a boom and a shake and some dust come rolling down, and all of a sudden, St. Francis wasn't just St. Francis on a dead end where I was at, it, it opened up to Hidden Hills. And I kind of expected it was gonna happen one day by looking at our, our town grow, but I think you can all agree that Hidden Hills is a nice addition. As a matter of fact, it's, I think it's actually a step up from where I'm at with Cedar Forest in that we have new ordinances in place and you have sidewalks, you know, you have homes that are, have nice values, and those nice values seem to be going up further and further, and the way that the roads are currently kind of stubbed in there, you, you heard Kevin talk about four roads that meet this property, we kind of knew all along that it would develop sooner or later, and, and we're kind of at that point. You know, I, it's, it's not gonna happen certainly in a year, and it's probably gonna be two or three years when it's probably all said and done, where you, you really start seeing things happening in there, but I'm here to make a commitment that is gonna match our neighborhood, 'cause I'm just concerned about it as you guys are.
Kevin, do we know yet if there's an HOA that's gonna be involved with this parcel or not?
The most, they almost all have to have an HOA now because TDEC requirements on common ownership of, of all the detention ponds and that sort of thing.
Would there be amenities due to that, do you think? Have you heard? We haven't seen a site plan yet, and I don't know...
I haven't, I haven't seen anything. I don't know what, what the plan is.
Sidewalks are going to be in there, we know that, and one of the conversations I had today with somebody was about that. They said, "Well, why can't, we have sidewalks?" Well, it's an older development, and we're requiring them now in our newer developments, but I don't think people mind you using their sidewalk. You can walk in through there all you want, so...
Right. As far as, I'll try to answer some of the questions that, that you said. As far as how many homes per acre, I mean, a 10,000-square-feet lot, everybody thinks, well, that's automatically acres of over 40,000 square feet, that's four units per acre. You really don't have that because you have to account for new roadways, detention ponds, that type of thing. On this property, you probably won't even get to the, the two and a half to three per acre, 'cause the topography is so steep, it's gonna, to me, it's gonna be very difficult to, to, to get to that.
It's why it has sat there for as long as it has.
It's why it's developed all around.
It's a very challenging property to develop.
Right, right. As far as vinyl or brick, I haven't, I haven't had any conversation with the developer. I don't know what he's planning. I don't know that really anybody's building vinyl houses in Smarter right now, even if they're siding, they're, they're concrete siding, the hardy board type siding.
Isn't this the builder that we required or asked him to change from vinyl to brick for a second story?
Right.
And he did. He changed his house to like 80 or 90% brick instead of 60/40.
Right.
So, this, this same guy pretty much went all brick in the last subdivision.
So, again, I have a specific conversation about that, but that's just, again, just from a value standpoint, you almost have to go mostly brick or stone or the hardy board type siding. Stormwater, Council Morrell kind of addressed that. That's something that is definitely looked at on every development regardless of zoning, so they'll have to meet all our stormwater regs.
Isn't most of the water running off this property already? I mean, it's the high point.
It's the, yeah, it's, there's a couple of ridges through it that all the water's going out of it most likely already. Of course, it's undeveloped now, so it's not, it's not a lot, there's no rooftops and roads and stuff, but still, that increase will have to be detained on the property. I think there was a question, something about how can we kind of preserve what you have now or something like that. You know, it's gonna be difficult for, to this property, even if it develops with, with an R1 zone, I mean, you're gonna have, obviously, a lot of trees are gonna go away and that sort of thing. I mean, we can certainly talk with the developer, look at some green space, look at where possible, maybe there's some buffers that could be kept, you know, where it borders the existing developed property.
And I guess I saw that more of being similar to the neighborhood around it.
Okay, well, and then I think that's, you know, you have a little bit of mix in there. Some, on one side, you have more hardy-type houses, on one side, it's all brick or whatever or so, but I mean, I think that's certainly something, I think you're gonna see similar homes. I just think that the value, the value's gonna have to be there for that to happen, for them to make money, so obviously, they're not gonna develop it if they can't make the money, so, you know, traffic, traffic is always a concern. These roads were stubbed. The idea there is that, you know, traffic does get dispersed some, if you, the more connections you have between neighborhoods, people don't have to go out to the main road to take their kid to their kid's friend that's in the other side of the neighborhood, they can connect through a different way. So, I mean, I think that's, these, these roads were stubbed for a reason. Williamsport was stubbed on either end with the idea that it would connect at some point. I mean, that's, it's there for that. I think in reality, just looking at the topography, I haven't seen a plan, I don't know what it's gonna be, but just looking at the topo, I think you're gonna almost have, this property's gonna almost develop in two separate sections. The northern, probably a third or so, you would have a kind of, almost a little cul-de-sac off of High Ridge Drive, and then the southern, probably half or two-thirds separately, just because to connect the two together, you have to go up and over a hill, so, but again, we'll see that when it's near.
Kevin, I think they're whispering about the same thing I was. Where's High Ridge at on this map?
It's off, you see Spinnaker Court?
Mm-hmm.
It actually stubs west from that. There's, I think there's only one house that faces it.
So, it's not labeled, but it's right there.
It's not labeled, but that's where it's at, yeah.
About there in the end?
Yeah.
Right.
Kind of above the R and R3 right there.
Yes, yes.
Okay. So, talk a little bit about the process, so they understand what's gonna be coming up over the next meetings, and then what may take a year or so to come before us.
Right. Well, obviously, this is tonight's first reading. There'll be a second reading in a month at the April council meeting with the public hearing. If it is approved on pub, on second reading, at that point, they can come back to the planning commission with, the first step would be a sketch plat, which is really just a big-picture concept plan. We look at all the road connections, a big picture of water sewer connections, stormwater. Not a whole lot of engineering at that point, it's really just kind of the big picture where everything's gonna come and fit together. After they get, sketch plat gets approved, they come back then with a preliminary plat and a set of construction plans, and that's where all the detail, more engineering details take place. We review all those things that we looked at on the sketch plat in a lot more detail. The step after the preliminary plats approved, at that point, you, and the construction plans, which construction plans are primarily just approved or reviewed in-house, or some state agencies, too, for utilities, but primarily in-house, and then you have, after that, there's the final plat that would come back to planning commission for review, and that's primarily just a, a survey and a recording document that sets all the right-of-ways and easements and all that. Within that process, there's a lot of internal review for grading permit as well as water and sewer construction. You know, again, timing on that is really dependent on how quickly the developer wants to move, you know? Uh, does he, is he wanting to put these lots online at a certain point, uh, for, because he has potential buyers or is this, uh, something he's buying in maybe a year or two from now before he really starts doing anything? In theory, within six months or so, there could be an approval to the point where they would have, uh, be able to get permits to start. Uh, but again, I don't know what his exact timeline is on that.
So, um, if tonight, if this passes tonight at our next council meeting, just like you heard us doing the public hearings tonight where individuals could step up to voice their opinions, that would be what the next step is in this process. So, um, any other questions or comments? I think we've done a pretty good job of addressing most of the concerns that we've heard from citizens.
A couple of points to take into account is that, uh, we have road projects which are on the cusp of beginning, which will help alleviate some of the traffic in this area to a certain degree. The Enid Springs Parkway extension, the, uh, Stonecrest Boulevard, um, uh, Sam Ridley road improvements. So there's things coming which will help. And, uh, uh, I, I guess one other thing to, to look at, and sometimes you got to look on down the road and you kind of go over there to the left on that map right there and you look at that other big parcel of R1 and you know that it sits up on top of a ridge too. And as soon as, uh, the, um, the property values reach the point, then that one will probably develop also. So, uh, and, and, you know, and looking at it, it has, uh, streets that are stubbed into it also. I mean, we're in a growing, thriving area and just recognizing the fact that, uh, uh, the train is running hard.
You know, one of the things I mentioned to a few folks today, and HG just touched on, is some of the impending road structure work that we've got coming in. We've got Sam Ridley Parkway on track now to be widened in the next hopeful couple of years for the beginning phases of that. We've got the Stonecrest intersection that will alleviate some traffic there, we hope. Uh, our intelligent traffic lighting system is under, under, under process now to help the flow of traffic a little bit. So we've got a lot going on. I, I will say that Rock Springs Road is drawing a lot of attention. It's kind of like the Ammerville Road corridor is growing, drawing a lot of attention. So there is a, currently, there's a, a, a large farm out there that's for sale that, uh, has, has had some people showing interest in that. So I think I reached out to Mr. Gill about this very thing, what, a month or so ago, didn't I, Harry? And, and said that we have to look, if that develops, we have to look at doing something with Rock Springs beyond the point of where it stops there at the vineyards and so forth. It's, uh, it's going to be a traffic issue for sure and a nightmare if that farm develops. Uh, we would have to ask that developer to help us make some improvements right there too. But we're doing all we can with our local roads and we are aware that you're in a growth corridor. We know that you are. It's a challenge for us too. But, uh, as Steve pointed out, we cannot tell people that they, they cannot sell their property and we, you know, if they have a, a buyer and a seller, that's not something we deal with. We just deal with the request when it gets here. So this R3 is the, just the perfect partner for where you live. And that's why we feel, I think, that it's the best fit if anything could have been requested.
Mary?
Yes.
The one, the suggestion that you made about them being able to meet with the developer, I think that's a great idea, but how do they get that done so that when they walk out of here, they know what to do to make that happen?
Well, certainly, um, like I said, I've been in, in email correspondence with, with the developer, Mr. Collins. Uh, I anticipate that I will, we, because we have, we built a, basically, I think we sent out 43 letters or something because there's a lot of adjoining property owners here and stuff. So I'm sure we'll, we'll probably reach out to him with some addresses at least. Well, I don't know if we have a whole lot of names, but certainly have addresses. Anybody who wants to, uh, let me know. I'll, that's maybe someone who's a, who has a Facebook page or something that's connected to a lot of the folks in the neighborhood, they can get the word out once I get with him and know exactly what time and.
Stevens, I think, has.
Stevens can.
Okay.
She's looking hard at the back of your head right now.
Do you feel the heat?
Yeah. So I'd be happy to try to help facilitate the two sides getting conversation going. Uh, and, you know, working with, with both sides to kind of help that happen.
Great.
Now, can I compel Ms. Stevens to go back to your Facebook page then? And please let your neighborhood know there are no condos, there are no townhouses, there are no duplexes. This is exactly what you have and that's what's being requested.
Okay. Anything else? Then do I have a motion?
I move we approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
A motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll move on to item three, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on tax map 35, parcel 88.00, containing approximately 3.7 acres. It's requested by Ramilla Patel from R1 to C2. The property is located on Florence Road and it is a first reading. Kevin?
This is a request for rezoning, uh, at the corner of Rebel Road and Florence Road. It is, uh, land use plans would support medium density residential development here. Trending zoning is R1 and R3 as well as I-3 in town and then RM in Rutherford County on the east side of Florence Road there. Uh, the planning commission did review this and did recommend denial unanimously.
Okay. Questions for Kevin?
Just maybe comments and maybe there'll be some questions for their, first off, one of the, the hardest thing to do is have somebody come before you and look them in the eye and say no. Um, but with this, the no wasn't in any way indicative, indicative of their character or anything, uh, such as that. It's that we're talking about rezoning something that's C2 in a heavy, heavily, you know, residential R3 area and.
And industrial.
And industrial. And so we don't know, we know that C2 opens it up to a lot of different possibilities and many of those possibilities are not friendly to a neighborhood. And, but, you know, I don't, I, I don't have a comfort level with it at that. If it was brought in as a PUD and we had neighborhood input about what was going in there and we knew that, you know, requirements for lighting and noise and the aesthetics, the, the design fit, then it would be something that, you know, I, I would feel more comfortable considering. But, you know, with an R2, you could have, uh, auto mechanic repair, um.
C2.
I'm sorry, C2. I'm sorry, I'm fighting bronchitis.
No.
You too.
Yeah.
We went to the same doctor yesterday.
I don't want to talk about it. Um, but, you know, there, there are so many different things that can, I mean, you know, you could actually put a Walmart there if you wanted to. I mean, if not, it wouldn't fit, but, you know, it's the type of zoning that you're looking at. It, it's more of that zoning that you think this needs to be on a Sam Ridley Parkway or a Nissan Boulevard or, um, even on a Lowry where it's more conducive to that heavier duty type C2. I mean, uh, I was going to say car lot, but we have a new zoning there. So from my perspective and, and my reason for voting no was I didn't have a comfort level that what was going in would fit this residential area and, and realizing there's industrial on the other side. So I'd really have to know a lot more. Well, Tim hit on something too that I'll just, uh, carry on a little bit. That, we think, if I'm not mistaken, Kevin, that the applicant at the time, we, we had a feeling they wanted to put in a convenience store. Is that correct?
That's what they indicated us, yeah.
Yeah. So, uh, some of the people from the neighborhood were, I think, in the audience that evening, maybe not a lot, but we both felt like, and I think the planning commission felt like, if they needed or wanted to have a neighborhood convenience store, that might make us feel better because right now those people have to leave their pocket and drive a little ways to a store other than the little Ed's Bait Shop down there. So, um, if we saw that as something that the neighborhood wanted, I think we could feel better about it. But just dropping a convenience store in the middle of a neighborhood doesn't make any sense at all.
In a neighborhood, also, 3.7 acres is substantial size.
Yeah, it's good size.
This, I mean, part of the conversation we had just a few minutes ago, this is a perfect example of looking at the property around it and not just zoning something because the land can support it. Um, the, C anything doesn't really fit here. Um, an R1, an R3, the I-3 just on the other side of the road maybe, but it, it doesn't fit on this side of the road. And so this, I, I'm actually very glad to see this request and I'm very glad that the planning commission voted six to nothing to deny it because that tells me that the planning commission is in lockstep with what we're saying here as a council. Um, this wasn't a split decision. It wasn't even a close decision. The planning camp, planning commission understands that what we're looking for when we're zoning and developing this property and that's, this is what this says. So I'm, I'm very happy to see this. So Tim and Mark, I know it doesn't mean much, but tell the planning commission, I appreciate that.
And just to reiterate, I know just a little ways down Florence Road where the existing of Ed's Bait Shop is, yes, it was, we, we voted earlier this evening to, um, make it at C2, but.
He's been there.
He's been there.
Yeah.
For many, 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 many years.
It's kind of hard to vote it. Something else when it's a building and a business that's been there for 30 years.
Hard to stop it.
Actually more than 30 even.
I can only remember that that far. I don't know about you.
Okay.
Didn't say anything about her age. Stop looking at me.
Any other questions or comments? Then do I have a motion?
I'll again make a motion to deny, to deny this request. And I will again second it.
Okay, we have a motion to deny and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is denied. We'll move on to item B, which is the package liquor board report, and there are no applications for the town council to consider at this time. We'll move on to item C, which is consideration of a resolution to request funds on unclaimed property held by the state of Tennessee. Rex?
Mayor and council, uh, passing this resolution allows the town to ask for, uh, the state of Tennessee for a refund. Uh, the property is made up of outstanding checks or credit balances on closed utility accounts and vendor accounts that were first held by the town and secondly by the state of Tennessee. This is something we do every year.
It's nice to hear when we're getting money back.
It's always good.
It is.
I like refunds.
That's right. So, um, questions for Rex on this? Do I have a motion?
So move.
A motion, do we have a second? A second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll move on to item D, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to adding language to the town of Smyrna municipal code title 13, property maintenance regulations, specifically adding a chapter five pertaining to vehicles displayed for sale, rental or distribution. And this is a first reading. Nathan, how are you?
Very well, mayor. Thank you. Mayor and council, this has, uh, been changed slightly since workshop. We have reworded the violation and penalty section, uh, removed some provisions that we thought might conflict with state law and, uh, now just says any person found to be in violation of the provisions of this part shall be subject to a fine of up to $50. Uh, the judge can impose court costs if she chooses. Additionally, in conference with the fire chief, Mr. Culberson, Chief Culberson, uh, we have, instead of setting up some type of footage scheme whereby they would have to keep this particular area clear, we have just determined that it might be more appropriate to just say that they cannot block the entrances at night and that language has been included as well. Uh, but it remains wholly unchanged other than those two modifications that we made.
I have one question though. Why are there nine appendices and eight on the screen? Do you see that?
This one was, this added the language that they could not block at night and that became number nine, that became number eight, I believe.
No, they're misnumbered.
They're misnumbered.
Oh, they're misnumbered?
Yeah, look, see, you've got two fours. There's no seven.
You've got two fours.
That's poor Roman numeral work. So I, I should retake that class.
And there's no seven.
There's no seven. Okay. Well, we'll, we can definitely fix that.
So one of your fours needs to become a seven.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, there's still, there is still something different because on our page, number eight is no vehicle shall be parked and that, I don't even see that in the packet. So it's not just numbers that, I don't see that line at all.
The one in the packet is the old one. The one on your desk is the new one.
So this is the new one.
Yes, I apologize.
And that number eight is the one that he emailed us about today. I don't know if you've got the email talking about that they were adding.
Yeah, but there's nine on the screen and nine on the sheet, even with the misnumbering.
Right.
So there's still something not right.
Right.
Okay. So the only question I have is on the violation and penalty. So I think a lot of our ordinances right now are $50 per day. The judge has the option. Is that, this just says up to $50. Is that a $50 cap? Is that per day, per offense, per what?
Per offense, yes.
And they could be issued a ticket every day?
They could be.
Okay, all right.
Can we clarify that?
Okay. It just, it just made, the way it was worded to me, it sounded like $50 is the most they could be charged. I'm just going to tell you, if I own a car lot, I'm going to pay you $50 to let you leave me alone.
Well, it's $50 and then it could be, you know, uh, what is another 75 in court cost, I think, on top of that. I don't know if that's substantial, but under the law, that's the limit that we're allowed to find in municipal court.
Okay.
Can't go any higher than that.
Yeah, just something's maybe weird.
I think that clarifies.
I know some of our car lot owners and they'll try to find a way to game it if they can.
For each offense. Correct.
What I like seeing is that this, this is really truly trying to help us clean up that industry on Lowry Street and so forth. And that's the efforts we're putting behind it.
If there's currently, currently parking on gravel or.
Grass.
Grass. Is that grandfathered or does that have to be, will that be corrected? And if so, what type of timeframe?
Property maintenance conditions, which is what this is defined as, are not grandfathered in.
That's what I thought.
Only zoning changes and things of that nature.
And if they're on grass and violation already?
Yeah, they're already breaking the, the municipal code if they're on grass now.
Just sitting here talking through this, one of the things I have a question about is, you know, we kind of got an issue with this years ago in regards to parking on grass and residential and what people did was they just went in and.
Pour gravel.
Pour gravel everywhere. Are we going to get into the same issue here when some of these that have a significant amount of grass go and just pour gravel everywhere so they can park cars wherever they want to park them?
Well, you see, I'm, you've got to, you have to mark them as well though. You, they have to be marked.
Now, I think what she's talking about though, they're just going to even residences. For instance, we have one on our street. There's probably seven or eight vehicles in their backyard now.
On gravel.
Well, some of them are grass and some of them, uh-huh, is that, you know, they're big lots and so I think, I mean, will that become an issue?
Well, it has to be a paved or concrete surface, number one is-
But this is commercial.
Right, but I was bringing, I was talking about the commercial, but I see what you're talking about, too, but-
I guess I'm not understanding what you're asking.
So, they would have to pave it.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, I just know some of them, they have a paved area, and then they have a gravel area that they're using, so if those areas now are all gonna have to be paved areas.
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Okay.
You know, we've got a couple lots that have large areas to display their cars, and some of them, you know, could possibly, from time to time, move their car, you know, they may face them one way, and then, at another time, they wanna face them another way. And of course, if we have the spot clearly marked with contrasting paint, then they don't really have that ability to be able to redisplay their cars. But, just talking with Mary Esther a little bit about it earlier today, and one of the things we possibly suggested is that they could, and I guess here's what we used for an analogy of it, was the way you see a football field painted, you know, for different levels of play, so that they have different markings for, say, facing the cars east or facing the cars west. Any problem with that? I mean, I guess if it's clearly marked, it's, it's okay, correct?
The spirit of the ordinance, obviously, we're open to any suggestions. If anybody has any, any different way to go about it, but is, without having markings, which is what, you know, we believe the council kinda wanted, is for there to be some orderness to it, a little bit more orderness to it. And without having the markings, then you've got the issue of, to not know whether it's eight by eighteen, codes are having to go out then and start measuring between cars and all that kind of stuff, and you don't, number one, we only have, have one right now to be able to do that, so you just don't wanna get into that situation either, where we're out with rulers and looking at those types of things. So, I, I think if they wanted to have multi-directional markings, that sure, that would be fine. But, that's just, the reason for the markings is for the orderness of it, cause we've all seen, it's not the, the folks that are really trying to have a nice lot and are organizing them right, it's those that wind up putting them two inches from each other, and, you know, Slenderman has to jump in there to try to get it pulled out for you. And so, that's what, that's what we're looking for.
Well, I mean, I've seen some of them out there that you would have to move three, you say, "I wanted to test drive that car," you're gonna move three cars before you could ever get to that. And I think that that's, that's not in keeping-
Right.
-with the spirit of sales when it gets down to it. That's some pretty darn poor marketing.
Well, could I, what's moved this forward is the calls, emails, discussions that we've had with citizens that are saying to us, they wanna see things down Lowry Street improved, and this is not the only area that, that we're improving. We're looking at lots of different things and enforcing codes that are currently on the books. And, and I would agree, I mean, there's some that are packed in there so tight, I mean, there is not room. I, I don't know how a car even pulls on the lot if they wanted to come in and see a vehicle. Right.
And I think one of the things we're, we're getting into, and I had two or three phone calls on that same subject about positioning cars. I understand that a lot of car lots use repositioning of their cars to draw attention to their lot. If you drive past something that looks the same every day, you forget about it, you don't notice it any longer. So, they reposition their cars to draw your attention, and I understand that, I get that. However, just like every ordinance we have, it's the folks that aren't keeping their lots orderly that are creating the problem. Every person that called me are actually already maintaining their lot in a very orderly fashion, and the lines is just adding more work to them, even though they're already doing the right thing. I understand that, but unfortunately, that's not the norm. Most of the lots, or a lot of the lots are not following what we would like to see, and that's the problem with every ordinance. We have it because there's violators.
I have a suggestion, though.
Yes, ma'am.
That when they do the lines, that maybe, you know, they can make a slight tick, that way they can realign the vehicles with, while still having the striping done.
We'll say that again, I'm sorry, I'm not sure.
So, they can make the stripes, but have a slight tick mark up here that, you know, is about this long, that is angled to where they can realign the vehicles and still be within the, the guidelines of footage.
Right. You know, we discussed multiple scenarios and invested a ton of time trying to figure out how we could be reasonable, flexible at the same time, but we finally honed in on a eight by eighteen parking place, and, you know, piggyback that comment, you know, it's been about a year or two ago, we said minimum fifty cars, which gave us a little muscle, a little bit of flexibility, a little bit more, I don't know, control over, over things. But the reality is, we got a lot of lots that you can't get fifteen cars on, you can't get eighteen cars on, and they don't have much wiggle room, and was it fair to go to the big lot and say, "Hey, you line them this way, that way, this way?" So, we settled on eight by eighteen parking places, and felt like that was fair to all, or as fair to all as we could be, and-
And actually, if we enforced the ordinance as it's written now, it would be nine by nineteen spots that they would have to have, so it would be even-
Yeah, we've got a little less restricted, yeah.
We gave them a little breathing there.
Yes.
Well, we're just trying to be fair and take, and, you know, both to the car lot owner and, and to the community, you know, as far as, because one of the things we continually hear is Lowry Street improvements and cleanup and whatnot, but I mean, I even had a discussion where if, you know, they had a row where the cars were bumper to bumper, but they still maintained the space on either side, that that still met the spirit of it. So, I don't, I don't think we're being overly restrictive, I think we're just trying to be fair to all parties concerned.
Yeah, I think to answer your question, Councilman North, is, as long as it's marked, I don't think codes is gonna care, as long as they can tell that, you know, that it's marked and meets the ordinance, that you're right, they could have two going off of the same one if they wanted to.
So, that would be okay?
Yep.
My only other question is, on here, it says that it will take effect immediately. Do you think we need to give them an amount of time to be able to do some of this stuff? I mean, it's gonna take them some time. And I can tell you, as a small business owner, coming up with the amount of money to stripe or to do some of those things, or to get some of those other cars moved off the lot might take a little bit of time. What is the plan?
Yeah, we absolutely talked about, once it, were voted on and approved, we'd give them two or three months, you know, an ample amount of time to, to get things in order, and we'll be very reasonable and very flexible with regards to that.
Do you want us to put July first in the, do you want us to put July first in the ordinance?
I think that would be-
I think that that's, I think that's fair.
Gives them some good weather to work with, too.
Yeah. Okay, other questions?
We're hoping.
We're hoping.
Okay.
I'll, I'll question, how necessary is the first four?
The definitions, Councilman McCall? Or the under thirteen five oh three?
Sixteen foot wide between the, the path between the vehicles.
We had discussed that, and I believe we, that was something, I think, that originated with the code, so I'm not really sure, the sixteen foot rows.
I don't know that it originated with the-
But that's the one, isn't that keeping them from doing just, what we were just talking about? No, from like three deep with no, you know what I mean? If you've got a small lot, and you've just got them three deep-
And that's it. If they've got a big lot, then it doesn't really cause a problem. But in a small lot, yes, it would cause a problem.
Right.
So, I, you know, and I guess that's kinda what I was asking, is what was the thinking behind?
Well, the sta-, I was just talking with Mr. Riggsby, the standard is twenty-two feet in a parking lot, so we cut it down to sixteen between the rows to make them be able to fit more in.
When the car lots come before BZA, we often talk about this access aisle, and we always look at it as, is there a way to get that car in and out without moving other cars?
Right.
So, if they put them back to back, and there's a lot, and there's an ingress and egress on either side, it's not necessarily between the cars, but each car has a way to get out.
Right.
And so, that's the way we've always kinda looked at it when they bring us our, their plan. We don't always make them have a row in between each car, they have to have a way to get in, and that's to keep them from having three deep or having them piled on there so deep that you couldn't really get a car out if you wanted to.
But with this, you couldn't keep them too deep.
Well, it just says ingress and egress. It does say between cars, but it says ingress and egress, so if we possibly took out the between the rows part, just said that they had a sixteen foot wide to ingress or egress, that'd probably cover us, if you just took out the between the rows part.
That's a good point.
I, I think that works.
So, you want to strike-
Between the rows.
Ingress and egress of vehicles so displayed.
No, between the, between the rows of vehicles.
Yeah, just leave, yeah, take out the between the rows of vehicles so displayed.
Okay, all right. That's fine.
Okay, but wait, think that through, are we gonna, does that allow them to put three deep?
No, you couldn't get the middle one out.
Okay.
You wouldn't be able to get the middle one in, in or out.
Yeah, if you had three, there's no ingress and egress.
But they could do two, as long as there was a row on the front and the back, then we're good. Okay.
Good point, Steve.
And, and the car lots still have to come to BZA, so as long as I'm there, I'll make sure that we stated with that as well.
Okay. Okay, other comments?
Uh, and, and, Nathan, we've talked about this a couple of times, about the, the second four, no motorized vehicle displayed for sale, rental, distribution shall be parked less than ten feet from a public or private roadway or thoroughfare, and how that relates to, like, state right of way.
I think when we drafted this, we were not considering the state right of way a public road or thoroughfare, the emergency lane or anything like that, but they can't have them right on the road, like where somebody could veer off and hit them, you know.
And they won't know where the right of way actually is anyway.
Correct.
So, this gives them a, a way to measure.
Yes, we just need them ten feet from the actual road that people are driving down.
I know, I know that, I've talked to Dennis Johnson about this a couple of times, and there's, generally down Lowry Street specifically, there's an edge of the pavement, where it kind of, it's almost exactly ten foot, so he generally goes by that edge of pavement.
Which isn't the right of way.
So, it's not the right of way. Right of way goes all the way back, but he's been going by kinda, it, it's about ten foot from the edge of the line, basically, but that's what he's been using, is that, that, that crack in the road right through there.
Yeah, I believe that's where that measurement came from.
Yeah.
Was, was that-
Okay, anything else with this one?
I'll just recognize, and there's no way to make it bulletproof, even though we were trying to, and we will come across complications at some point, I'm sure.
And, you know, to comment on that, we wanted to make sure everything we did was supportable, in case we ever ended up in court over the whole deal, or somebody challenged our, our ordinance, so we think it's, I don't know if it's bulletproof, but it's pretty reasonable, Jeff.
I'm always reasonable.
Maybe I should ask Nathan that.
Yeah.
Huh?
Okay, um, no other questions about this? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item E is approval of a policy for the administration of naloxacan? No, how did we-
Naloxone.
Naloxone, naloxone or Narcan by the Smyrna Police Department officers. Chief?
Yes, ma'am. Unfortunately, the opioid crisis has come to Smyrna, just like it has the rest of the country. And what we're trying to do here is, we have been giving a, from Chatham County Community Coalition, a grant for Narcan or naloxalone, however you wanna call it, and we have the items, but before we issue them out to our officers, we want to have a policy in place. Every single officer at the Smyrna Police Department has received training on the proper administration of Narcan and how to administer it to an individual who is undergoing an overdose.
As much as I hate that we have to do it, I think it's something that must be done. Are there any questions or comments for Chief? Do I have a motion to approve?
A motion to approve.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item F is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute a lease of 2.64 acres from the Smyrna Rutherford County Airport Authority relative to a firing range for the Smyrna Police Department. Chief?
Yes, ma'am. Just very briefly, I just wanna thank Mr. Gill and Mr. Peach for their hard work on this and working very hard in getting this opportunity for the police department. Really and truly, since it's a legal contract, I will allow the Esquire to speak. I, in turn, will not.
This has been a long time coming.
It has been a long time coming, and we're very-
It's been hard for you to locate places.
Yes, and again, I mean, I mean, no one wants to have a firing range next door to their house, so we were very lucky in being able to find this piece of property.
Anything to add, Jeff?
No, Mr. Gill saved us quite a bit of money by negotiating down the price from, I think it went from fifteen cents to ten cents per square foot, so that, that will save us a lot of money, and it's for three years with the option to renew for three successive terms of three years. But we really appreciate John Black and, and the airport for allowing us to do this, cause it will save us tons of overtime and just make it a lot more convenient for our police officers to train out there.
Is this where the old firing range used to be, the existing?
It's close by, close by. That one's still in operation, but only the National Guard is using it.
Mayor, I move to approve.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We will now move on, move on to our consideration of appointments to boards and committees. Our first item is, and I think you have a packet that Tiffany's put together for you in front of you that kinda lays everything out. Our first one is appointment of one member to the Package Liquor Board to serve a four-year term ending in 2022. This member is appointed by majority vote of the Town Council. We had one term that was expiring and only had one application that was received, and Thomas Booker. So, since we only had one application, we do not need to take nominations. So, all in favor of Thomas Booker say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item two is appointment of one member to the Board of Zoning Appeals to serve three-year term ending 2021, and one member to serve an unexpired term ending in 2019. Steve Sullivan's term is expiring, and Alfred Thanh is needing to step down. We have had two applications, Steve Sullivan and Jay Michelson. These members are appointed by Town Council. Since we had two terms expiring and two applications, no need for nominations, so all in favor of Steve Sullivan and Jay Michelson for, for the Board of Zoning Appeals. Oh, do I need to do this separate, since we're doing two, two dates?
If I gotta debate, he does, one's three years and one's-
Okay, so, um-
I'm a little concerned about the first, to be honest.
Y'all can vote no.
Do we just need to do nominations for the one for 2021, or just, how do we need to do that?
I think we can, it's probably the safest to do.
Okay, so, I will take nominations for the term ending in 2021.
I nominate Mr. Steve Sullivan.
Okay, any other nominations?
Thanks, Mark, I'm not sure if you're helping me there or not.
Okay, seeing no other nominations, nominations now cease, and since we only have one nomination in Steve, all in favor of Steve serving the term ending in 2021 say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Steve. We only have one other applicant, and that member will serve an unexpired term ending in 2019, who is Jay Michelson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Jay. We'll move on to the Sister City Committee. We have an appointment of two members for the Sister City Relations Committee to serve three-year terms ending in 2021. We had two rolling off and two that have applied, Mary Ann Rogers and Mike, Mark Michelson, and these members are nominated by the mayor and confirmed by majority vote of the Town Council, so, um, all in favor of Mary Ann Rogers and Mike, Mark Michelson say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They will now be our Sister City representatives. We'll now move on to item four, which is appointment of two members to the Parks Advisory Board to serve two-year terms ending 2020, and one non-voting member outside the city limits to serve a two-year term ending in 2020. These members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the majority vote of the Town Council. We had five applicants, Robert Scott Poston, Thomas Williams, Doris Sullivan, who is a county resident, Woody Reed, who is a county resident, and Jay Michelson. I will appoint Robert Scott Poston, Thomas Williams, and Doris Sullivan to be our county resident. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, um, then we have item five, which is appointment of two members to the Planning Commission to serve two-year terms ending in 2020. These two individuals are appointed by the mayor, so I will appoint Mike Allen and Ed Davenport. We do have two others that are council member selections. One member is the mayor or his, or her designee, and I will appoint, appoint Mark Atkins. Congratulations, Mark.
What did I just get?
You just got to be on the Planning Commission again as my, as my designee. Now, we do need one council member to be on the Town Council, and that is appointed by the Town Council, so-
I'm gonna name Tim Morrell.
The nomination. Any other nominations?
The nomination cease right now.
Do I have a second for nomination ceasing?
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, so we have one nomination and that is Tim Morrell. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Congratulations Tim. You have another meeting to attend.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next, we have the Project Assistance Board, which is an appointment of two members to serve three-year terms ending in 2021. We had three applicants, Octavia Coleman, Harrison Woodard, and Mike Williams. We had two rolling off. I will tell you that Octavia also applied for... What was it?
Planning and charity assistance.
No, there was another one. Charity assistance. And we try to keep people only serving on one board. So do I have nominations for Project Assistance Board?
The two three-year terms. I will nominate Harrison Woodard and Mike Williams for those three-year terms.
Any other nominations? Then nominations will, are closed and since we only had two that were nominated, all in favor of Harrison Woodard and Mike Williams say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we have the Beer Board. We, this is appointed by majority vote of the town council. We had one applicant that was eligible, which was Miranda Swift. And since we only had one eligible applicant, then all in favor of Miranda Swift say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Miranda Swift is now on our beer board. We next move on to our Stormwater, which is appointed by majority vote of the town council. We have three, no, one, two. Three members, three members. We have two to serve terms ending in 2020 and one to serve a one-year ending in 2019. I will tell you, we had four applicants. Carlos Rawls currently serves on the Parks Board. And so if we kind of want to follow what we normally do in only having somebody serve on one board, I think we need to think about that. But do I have nominations for two members to serve the term ending 2020?
How about Catherine Cruz and Abi Patra?
Okay, any other nominations for the two-year term? Okay, seeing no other nominations, they are now closed. And we only had two nominations and two openings for the two-year term. So all in favor of Catherine Cruz and Abi Patra? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, they are two-year individuals. And then we need to fill the one-year term ending in 2019.
Leaves Ben Franklin.
Good old Ben.
Okay, so is Ben your nomination?
Yes, his nomination.
His nomination, okay. Any other nominations? Since we only have one nomination, all in favor of Ben Franklin say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll move on to two members to the Historic Zoning Commission to serve five-year terms ending in 2023. The members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by majority vote of the town council. We had Bobby Goins, Michelle Mastin, Wasnovsky, and Vanessa Haley. I will appoint Bobby Goins and Vanessa Haley. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll move on to item 10, which is appointment of two members to the Industrial Development Board to serve six-year terms ending in 2024. And these members are appointed by majority vote of the town council. We did already appoint Mr. Patra to Stormwater. So that leaves us two other applicants. So do I have nominations for two members to serve on the IDB?
I'll nominate Ed Davenport and Mark Atkins.
Any other nominations?
I thought we could only serve on one board.
You're a special, you're special.
I was going to say if he gets that exception out, he too.
So seeing no other nominations, all in favor of Ed Davenport and Mark Atkins say aye. Any opposed? Okay, next we have the Arts Commission. We have members appointed by the majority vote of the town council. We have three openings. And for two-year terms ending in 2020, we had Debbie Michelson, Carrie Finch, Lauren Fitzgerald, Robin Calada, Oliver Langston, and Jennifer Young. Do we have nominations? Raquel, do you have some suggestions?
Let's see, Ms. Michelson is already on there, so we need three. Oh, she's being reappointed.
The top three are wanting to return.
Yeah, the top three are wanting to return. I didn't know if you, or is there anybody else who has any nominations for Arts Commission? Are there others that you'd?
Let's see. Lauren Fitzgerald, she's already been appointed. Oliver Langston, Robin Calada, and Debbie Michelson.
Okay, any other nominations? Then since we only have three nominations and three open spots, we will, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Debbie Michelson, Robin Calada, and Oliver Langston for the Arts Commission. Next, we have an appointment of two members to the Smyrna Charity Assistance Board to serve three-year terms ending 2021 and one council member. And the one council member is either the mayor or the mayor's town council designee. And Lori, would you be willing to continue serving in that position?
I will.
Great, thank you. And then the members are voted by the majority of the town council. And Lori, I know that's been your board, so we have three that are rolling off and we have four applications. One of the, Gwendolyn Beverly, Bobby Goins, Kay Charles, and Octavia Coleman. We did appoint Bobby Goins to the Historic Zoning, so do you have ones that you want to nominate?
I will nominate, do we need to do the one-year term for Kay Charles separately?
Two members to serve three-year and... One must be Smyrna citizen. Is this wrong on the thing Jeff? Because it's showing, it's showing two members, but this is showing three rolling off. Do you think that's a misprint?
Must be. I'm, because I'm seeing, I guess, obviously what you're seeing is the two, two one-year terms and the two three-year term.
No, two members to serve three-year terms and then the one council member to serve a one-year term, you know, each year.
So is Kay Charles's term?
That her term is three years.
Yes, I see.
Instead of one.
There's also too many. Yeah, there's also too many.
So I guess my question is, is it Kay's time to roll off?
They've got her listed on here, so I'm guessing it is.
Okay, so we're going to guess, so we're going to guess that it's all three that it's time to reappoint. Yes, that are three-year terms, yes.
Well, with that then, I will do it all together and nominate Kay Charles, Gwendolyn Beverly, and Octavia Coleman to the Charity Assistance Board.
Any other nominations? Okay, since we have no other nominations, all in favor of Gwendolyn Beverly, Kay Charles, and Octavia Coleman say aye. Any opposed? Okay, those individuals are now in Charity Assistance. Then the last thing is the mayor to appoint one member to the Smyrna Housing Authority to serve a five-year term ending in 2023. I received one application in Paul Lamb, so I will appoint Paul Lamb to the Housing Authority. Under other is item a, approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute a contract amendment with Barge Design Solutions relative to the additional design work of, on the Nolan Drive relocation project. Mike?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Council. During a progress meeting with Mr. Gill, Tom Rose, and Kevin Riggsby, we were going over the design work and the original, obviously the original Nolan Drive design. It was done 10 years ago, didn't have a right-hand turn lane going on to Sam Ridley Parkway. So we discussed that. It's almost enough room there right now. I drive it every day. And we felt like we at least needed to bring it to Mayor and Council to get y'all's thoughts on it. And I asked Barge Solutions to give us an estimated cost for the design work on that. And you can see in the summary what that includes. It does include TDOT coordination and they would, they would handle that. Additional surveying and designing, possible signal modification there. So there'd be some utility coordination to be in there as well.
So my only question, Mike, is since this kind of pulls TDOT into the project, is that going to slow down or hinder the rest of the project? Can we continue moving forward with the rest of it if we approve this and allow this to kind of continue on its own path?
Yes, sir. I would say it probably would. I kind of put a note in there in my timeline that it probably would. Tom may have better, you know, explanation of that. I guess we'll get a way out if we want to handle that now or wait and see how the traffic flows without a right-hand turn lane. But I could see that slowing it down. But to be aware, we don't have the money in this budget year right now. It would be in the next budget year anyway.
So what, where I'm going with my thought process is I think the turn lane's probably needed, but maybe, maybe we do this as a completely separate project so that it doesn't slow down our Nolan Drive improvements. So we can keep moving with Nolan Drive and then just add this as a second project that needs to be done. I just hate to kind of stop progress.
From your perspective, it leaves us, you know, if they say it's going to take 18 months where we can improve a turn lane, we have an option to back out on that and just get it...
Continue with Nolan Drive and handle it completely separate.
Yeah, yeah, I think that makes sense if we can pull that off.
So we saying leave the, go ahead and do the design?
Well, it looks like an alternate, like an alternate bid on the project or something?
Yeah, my proposal's moving forward, but bid it as a separate project. Don't do a change order to the Nolan Drive project.
Sure. Well, I guess, do we want to go ahead and do the design work or we've got that and go ahead and submit that to TDOT?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, okay. I just hate to build something new and then come right behind it and tear part of that up.
Yeah, I understand. And ideally, we'd like for them to co-concurrent, but if we...
Sure.
I just, we've seen with TDOT and everything else we've got going on in the city.
Yes, sir.
This could be a two-year project by adding a turn lane.
I certainly understand. And I will add, I think I told you when we approved the contract, that, that property we are going through does belong to the Airport Authority, so we will need an easement through that property with them and with the Kmart property owners as well.
Other questions, Mike? I'm glad to see we're moving forward with this project. Okay, no questions? Then do I have a motion?
Motion that we approve the design work.
Motion and do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now move on to status reports. Anything, Mr. Gill?
No ma'am.
Any announcements?
No.
Ms. Diane, anything? Mr. Peach?
I did receive a message from Tiffany that Kay's is a three-year term, so we did correct on it.
We did correctly, good.
She's working on it, let Kay know.
She'll not be paid for watching it.
Yeah, I was going to say, do we have to pay Tiffany for that?
It's nice to know Tiffany's keeping us straight, even from home watching, so. Raquel?
Yes, I have one thing and I think it may actually be on your announcement, so I'll only mention, I will only mention it briefly, that the Arts Commission is hosting a pancake breakfast on April the 21st. And tickets are $5 and they can be purchased here or from one of the members of the Arts Commission. And it's going to be at Chili's from 8:00 to 10:00 on April 21st, which is a Saturday. And then I'd like to extend condolences to Britt Phillips and her family on the loss of her father. And also to Marion Appleton on the loss of her husband Eddie Appleton.
Okay, HG?
I'm just kind of taken aback by passing Eddie. I didn't, hadn't heard about that. This past weekend was my son-in-law's birthday. I don't even know how old he was. And also my, my granddaughter, who was two.
I don't think that came out the way you did.
Well, it came out exactly. I mean, you know, I don't know how old he is. He's 30-something, you know? But my granddaughter, the love of my life, little beauty, is two years old.
You knew that one?
I knew that one.
You better get that one.
That would be Mary Holland.
Anything else?
Shop local.
And often.
Often.
No, I'm good tonight, thank you.
Steve?
I know there's a couple of things coming up you're probably going to cover, so I'm going to skip those. I did want to say the Sister City Committee visited all of the open houses. I don't know if they got all of them, but I know they went to Stewart's Creek and Smyrna High School for incoming freshmen. And we had a very, very positive turnout from that. I think we received five or six applications the next day. We only have, I think, four or five spots left. And for the first time in a long time, we may actually have more applicants than positions, which doesn't happen.
Right.
So it's, it's going well. Looks like we're going to have a full delegate heading to Japan. The dates are not quite set yet. They're, they're being worked out, but they're coming up. So thanks a lot, folks that came out for the senior citizen for the chili cook-off. I know that several of us that came to judge got to try some interesting stuff. I'm still not sure if raccoon was really in that chili or not, but...
I still have heartburn.
I didn't eat it.
Twenty-six of those containers we had to try.
Yeah, so...
I called them chili shooters.
Chili shooters.
They were little jello cops.
So that's all, that's all I've got. Now we're talking chili shooters.
It was a fun event, though. Very well attended.
Yeah, somebody called it the political of the year. I think every potential candidate was there.
And the 24th, Saturday, March 24th, the Lions Club will be having their annual pancake breakfast at the Senior Center and it will be from 8:00 to 10:30. So come and support the Lions Club as well.
Great. Mark?
March 23rd, we're going to be at Motlow. And I've got the honor of saying a few words publicly on behalf of our council, since you were not able to be there. They'll be groundbreaking the new third building at Motlow University. So if you're not doing anything that day, you like to come out, that's going to be an exciting day for those people at Motlow and of course, our community. Want to remember Donnie Williams. You know, Donnie passed away here recently. Donnie's a fixture in our community, Williams Brothers Cabinets, which is over across from Stonecrest Hospital there. A lot of us grew up with Donnie and know him well, so condolences to him and his family.
In addition to that, Donnie's dad just passed away.
Oh my gosh.
Two days ago, two days ago. He was in the hospital when they were doing funeral home for him, so.
So that family really needs some lifting up, don't they? You had a child that is no longer a child, turned 21. I'll let you say more about that, but good job. You got them to adulthood. And I want to thank the mayor for coming out to my office today at Parks Realty. She spent about an hour giving PowerPoint presentation to a lot of our realty agents about the state of the town and the healthy town that we have and the attraction that it is. And she did a really good job with that. Last week was National Women's Week and so I just wanted to, I told her this this morning, but I want to give a shout out to all of you ladies that are out there doing the job of business and, and leadership and the things that you're doing for your families and the community. It sets a great example. It's nice to have our mayor sitting here tonight as a, as a female leader in our community and I'm really proud of that. So with that, I'll end. That's all I have.
Thank you. Couple of items that I've been asked to announce. One, the Sister City program is still recruiting students for the program and applications can be found on the Town of Smyrna website. And all you have to do is contact Tiffany Lawson or Casey Connerd for more information. And prospective students must live within the Town of Smyrna or attend a Smyrna middle or high school. And students will be traveling to Zama, Japan for two weeks in July. The Smyrna Fire and Police Department Annual Easter Egg Hunt will be Saturday, March the 24th at 1:00 PM at the Lee Victory Recreation Park football fields. Don't forget to bring your own baskets and the Easter bunny will be on hand for pictures. The rain-out date will be Saturday, March 31st and it's sponsored by the Smyrna Natural Gas Department. And I will tell you, get there when it starts because it takes about a minute and a half and it, it looks like a vacuum cleaner has cleaned up that, that field. So we also will have Easter Sunday Grand Buffet at the Smyrna Event Center, April 1st from 11:00 to 2:00. The reservations are required as space fills up quickly. It's $19.95 for adults and half-price for children ages 5 to 10. I will tell you, you cannot beat this buffet. The Rutherford County Hazardous Waste Collection Event in Murfreesboro Solid Waste Department at 4765 Florence Road in Murfreesboro will be Saturday, April 7th from 8:00 to noon. It's across from Rose Lawn Cemetery. Then the Family Safety Expo at the Smyrna Event Center will be Saturday, April 14th from 9:00 to 2:00. The following class will be offered at the expo this year. The Town of Smyrna is offering a free CPR and AED class at the Fourth Annual Family Safety and Preparedness Expo. The expo will be held at the Event Center at 100 Sam Ridley Parkway East. The class time is scheduled for 9:00 to 3:00 and the class is limited to the first 75 people who register. Chief, what do they need to do? They need to call town?
Go online.
Go online and you can sign up. The course time will be from 9:00 to 3:00 and it's the CPR, AED course being offered, which will consist of the following modules. CPR, adult, child, and infant, AED, adult, child, and infant. And the certification requirements are that you attend the class session, participate in the course activity, and successfully complete a written exam and demonstrate proficiency in all the required skills. Anything else, Chief? Did I do okay? Be good?
Close to our limit.
Okay, and Chief says we're getting close to the limit. So if you want to be part of the 75, you probably need to go online and get registered. The pancake breakfast that Raquel talked about will be Saturday, April 21st, to be held at Chili's Restaurant in Smyrna from 8:00 to 10:00. The cost is $5 and tickets must be purchased in advance and all proceeds will benefit the Smyrna Arts Commission. You can contact Melissa Scott here at Town Hall for more information. And on a personal note, Parker did turn 21 on Sunday. It's hard to believe he's already that age. And Britt's birthday, my husband Britt will, his birthday, I won't say age. His birthday will be... will be Thursday, so happy birthday to Britt. So, we just have been birthday partying it all week.
I forgot to add something, if I may.
Sure.
At, at the Parks Realty Office, on Saturday, the 24th, if you have anything to shred, the large shredder truck will be there. It's a public service, so if any of you out in the public have some documents, or whatever, that you want to take by Parks Real Estate, over there by Sun Trust, and Jim and Nick's on Sam Ridley, take that by between 9:00 and 12:00 that morning. I won't be able to be at the Easter Egg Hunt, because I have a two-year-old granddaughter's birthday party that day, Chief.
Ah.
So, I'm sure the candy be gone long, long after I'm gone, so...
One other, go back, you just, when you said Parker's birthday, it reminded me, my, my mother's birthday is coming up, March 19th. We just appointed her to Parks Advisory Board, so trust me, y'all will get, get to know her very well. But she recently retired, at the end of December, and so she's enjoying retired life, so it's probably her first birthday with freedom, and I can tell you, she's enjoying it, so...
Good.
Happy birthday to my mother.
Well, essentially, mentioned mothers, I have to mention, my mother's birthday will be coming up in April, April 8th. I don't guess she'll mind my telling her age, but she will be the young age of 95.
Wow.
Yep, I have her on a daily regiment of calisthenics exercise. She is pushing to be the oldest person in Smyrna someday, so I don't know how many people we have around here older than 95.
Besides you?
I was, I was gonna say, that I was very surprised, she's that, she's that young.
They show no mercy to old guys, I can tell you that.
My father-in-law, my father-in-law's almost 90, so we've got a lot of folks...
Well, almost 90 is not 95, Steve, I got you there.
Pardon? I'm 20 years younger than you, though.
96.
96. My father's 96.
Yes, he'll be 97 in a night.
Well, come on, Mom, hang in there.
Might need to hook them up.
Come on, Lionel, tell him.
Come on, Lionel, tell him.
What are you saying?
Might just need to hook them up.
They'll be the oldest couple.
That's right. Anything else?
Yeah, the Citizens Police Academy trivia contest is this Friday night, at the National Guard Armory. Teams are $250. I am looking to reclaim my crown. It's been two years since my team has won. We're out for blood.
Oh.
And we're going out to Stewart's Creek tonight, or we're not?
I was supposed to flip the coin at 7:00 o'clock, for, between Stewart's Creek and Smyrna High School for soccer, so I'm a little late in flipping the coin, so surely, they went ahead and started the game without us. It's the inaugural Mayor's Cup for soccer, so I guess we're still gonna make it out there, and present the trophy at the end. It's just gonna be really cold.
Yes.